Buenas noches señoras y señores, para los de ustedes que necesiten interpretación al español, tenemos a los interpretes aquí en la escalera, pueden ustedes pasar a recibir un audífono para escuchar la junta. El anuncio que acaba de hacer el comandante de incendios nos dice que necesitamos mantener las hileras aquí de cada lado, sin gente, nada más una hilera junto a la pared, por favor mantengan ese espacio libre, de ambos lados por favor, muchas gracias.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this very special evening. We appreciate your accommodations and patience. This venue makes it a little bit more special for the ceremony and we know it's a little bit awkward when it comes to sitting and viewing, but we want to welcome you all. At this time it's my pleasure to call the special meeting to order. And this consists of the Oxnard City Council, the Oxnard Community Development Commission, Successor Agency, the Oxnard Financing Authority, and the Oxnard Housing Authority. Mr. Martinez, could we have a roll call, please? We have our Housing Authority Commissioners, we'll have a roll call for everything but the authority of this thing. Councilmember Commissioner Ramirez. And now please a roll call for the housing. Chairman Holden.
Here.
Vice Chairman Pinkert.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Flynn.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Agenda was closed to Thursday in the city clerk's office and library. Tonight's Housing Authority includes compensation for meetings of fifty dollars per meeting. Very well. So we have a number of items here. Now, Mr. Martinez, with the likely results of the canvas of returns of the general municipal election held on November 6, 2012. 2012, the city council adopted resolution number 14238, calling for the municipal election to be held on November 6, 2012. On November 29, 2012, Ventura County Elections Office reported the canvas of the returns with the highest numbers of votes received by Timothy B. Flynn for mayor, Brian McDonald, Dorina Padilla for city clerk, Danny Navas for city treasurer, and Daniel Martinez for Also, exhibit A of the selection results has been presented to the city council and is available for public review. This concludes my report. Very well, I approve the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Martinez, only have a roll call. Mayor Holden.
Here, I mean hi. Here, John, here, hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Pinkert.
Aye.
Councilman McDonald.
Aye.
Councilman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Very well, that does carry. The next item of business is the presentation of resolution to myself by our mayor pro tem.
It gives me great pleasure to present this resolution to Dr. Thomas E. Holden for eight years of outstanding service to the city of Oxnard as mayor, but as you know, he spent over eighteen years being in public service as a councilman and a mayor. He's the only person I know that has had his family while in office, and all the kids are now grown up, and it shows how young he was when he started. Whereas Dr. Thomas E. Holden has faithfully served residents and businesses of the Oxnard community as mayor since he was elected in November 2004, and whereas Dr. Thomas E. Holden has distinguished himself as a valued leader who consistently brought a high level of enthusiasm and energy to his office, and who has worked many long hours on behalf of residents of Oxnard. Whereas Dr. Thomas E. Holden has been active in local government and has helped bring to fruition numerous projects such as the collection at River Ridge, Seagriff, the rape program, and the advanced water purification facility, the Rice Highway 101 interchange, and many, many other excellent activities in the city. Whereas, Dr. Thomas E. Holden is an Oxnard native and local businessperson who has participated in numerous organizations contributing to the success of the Oxnard community, including the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard in Port One Invy, the Knights of Columbus, and St. John's Regional Medical Center Community Board. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Oxnard does hereby resolve, amend, and recognize and extend its gratitude to Dr. Thomas E. Holden for eight years of dedicated public service and his significant leadership role as mayor of the city of Oxnard, striving to create clean, safe, attractive, prosperous neighborhoods for the Oxnard community for the betterment of present and future generations. In witness thereof, we, the council, have here on to set our hands across the great seal of the city of Oxnard to be affixed this fourth day of December, 2012, from black hair to gray hair. I urge that we present this resolution to Dr. Holden unanimously.
May I give a second? Thank you. Well, thank you. So the next item of business is for me to present the resolution on behalf of the entire city council to Dr. Irene Pinkert for her service in the city of Oxnard. And, Dr. Pinkert, we all know that the commitment, the time, the time away from family, the events, the everything that goes with the job, you did exceptionally well, and we're very honored and privileged to have the service. And this resolution is presented to you today. And as hereby, we hereby proclaim, resolve to commend Dr. Irene Pinkert for four years of dedicated public service as a member of the Oxnard City Council, whereas Dr. Irene Pinkert has faithfully served residents and businesses of the Oxnard community as a council member on the city council since she was elected in 2008, and serving as mayor pro tem from 2010 to 2012. Dr. Pinkert has distinguished herself as a valued leader who consistently brought high level of dedication and commitment to her office, and who has worked many long hours on behalf of residents of Oxnard. And as Dr. Pinkert touched, whereas is the touch on all the accomplishments that she mentioned, as well as many others, including the citywide enhancement program, the downtown including task force, the graffiti action program, cultural arts committee, and many, many more so. And Dr. Pinkert has also participated in several community organizations, including president of the Oxnard Union High School District Board of Trustees, Oxnard Planning Commission, Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority, Xi Cap Omega Chapter, 20th Century Onyx Club, the Black American Political Association California, and the NAACP. Now therefore, the city council and the city of Oxnard is hereby resolved to commend, recognize, and extend its gratitude to Dr. Irene Pinkert for four years of dedicated public service, and for your significant leadership role as a member of the city council in enriching the Oxnard community for the betterment of present and future generations. Dr. Pinkert. Okay, at this time, Mr. Martinez, it looks like it's an opportunity for presentations to myself and Dr. Pinkert. Mayor Holden, councilmembers, I need a motion. I'm sorry. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You have this.
How do you do that, Joe?
The U.S. House of Representatives Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition, presented to Tom, Dr. Thomas Holden, mayor of the city of Oxnard, in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community from 2004 to 2012, signed by Elton Bell.
Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, resolution for the Board of Supervisors of Ventura, Ventura County honoring Dr. Thomas E. Holden for his eight years of public service to the city of Oxnard.
Mayor Pro Tem, Irene Pinkert. I have a certificate, I'm sorry, a resolution from the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County honoring Dr. Irene Pinkert for four years of dedication to public service as a member of the Oxnard City Council.
Thank you.
Our first speaker representing an organization is Dr. Manuel M. Lopez, representing the harbor.
I come here today representing the Oxnard Harbor District. As you all know, the harbor district has a very, very high profile as far as economic development is considered in the area here, and I think we've always cooperated very well with the city of Oxnard and Port One Invy, and we certainly with the city council, the mayor, and the mayor pro tem who are leaving today, we certainly want to thank them for all the good work that they've done for the residents of the city of Oxnard and for the area. We want to thank their family for sharing them with us, and we know that they'll be very happy to have them back home so now they can tell them what to do. But we really, we really want to convey as much as we can the feelings of all the residents of the city of Oxnard for the great work that they have done, and I'm sure it's very, very grateful, appreciate it. We also would like to, as long as I'm up here, to congratulate the incoming members of the council. We know that they have a tremendous amount of work ahead of them, a lot of challenges, but they will be, when they look back, they will see the good things that they have contributed to the community and that have taken from their families, because it is a very, very stressful and very difficult position that you will find yourself in, but again, it will be, give you a sense of accomplishment and something that is very worthwhile. We also want to share with Dorina Padilla, a companion, we know that her family is very, very proud of her, as I think that all the residents of Oxnard should feel proud, because generally, or a lot of times, young people are criticized for doing a lot of things that are not very, very commendable, but we know, in fact, that that is not true. We know that all the young people have a tremendous amount of energy and a tremendous amount of ability, and I think that what she's doing here is demonstrating that to us. And so I think that should give all of us hope for the future, in spite of the difficulty that we've had as a country and I guess as a world, I think that we all have a lot of good things to look forward to with people of that caliber. So I just want to congratulate her and her family, and also the residents. I also would like to add a little bit here, as long as I'm given the opportunity, and that is, I'm very, very happy to be here at Barbara Murray's, her living room, because she has brought a lot to the city of Oxnard. The residents of the city of Oxnard have always been very supportive of public libraries, starting with the Carnegie Building, then the building over on Third and, between Second and Third, on C Street, the eighteen thousand square foot library, then we built this building here, it's four times as large, and we've never had any complaints from the citizens. So they've always supported education, and I think they were very fortunate for that. So with that, I think I've carried on too long, but congratulations to all the incoming elected officials, and thank you for the one that has served.
I know that Harvard, the facility's not used to this many people, but perhaps they might want to open the doors and just get a little. City staff, I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Jeff Dean this evening, he sends his regrets, he is in Sacramento with Cal sheriffs, and it's an honor for me to be here to recognize you, Dr. Holden, and Irene, for your service and commitment to the community of Oxnard. I was honored to serve under your leadership, and so it's a very, it's a big deal for me to be here this evening. The sheriff specifically wanted to recognize your commitment to public safety, and not public safety just in the sense of police, but you both understood that it took an engaged community along with the police, strong leadership and political will to further public safety agenda. You both have demonstrated that and made a difference here in the city of Oxnard. Take a look at where we have been and where we are today, and I think you're mighty soon to speak for itself. So thank you very much. So on behalf of the sheriff, I have proclamations here for both of you. I finally get the chance to look down at the chief, that's pretty cool. Eighteen years, that never happened in my life, and I'm used to these conversations. Jerry Williams.
Mayor Pro Tem, Pinkert, and the rest of council as well as city staff, public safety is here together as a team. John touched a little bit about this, it's one thing to say things, it's another thing to exercise and do what you say that you're going to do. And in the year and a half, almost two years that I've been here, you all have been the epitome of that. You don't just say things, you do what you say, you say what you do. So on behalf of our agency, and fire does have a presentation for you too, to Dr. Holden, you both have plaques from us, but Dr. Holden, we want to thank you for your leadership and your tireless effort with both Measure O as well as gain prevention, so words cannot describe how much we greatly appreciate your support, and we will terribly miss you. And to Dr. Pinkert, your work with the Police Activities League as well as youth safety programs has been amazingly immense, and we will be remiss in having you all here, certain for sure that the remaining council will do the same and march to the same beat of the same heart. So we thank you, Godspeed, enjoy retirement, whatever that means to you, and we will greatly miss you.
First of all, it's an honor to be here with my sister in public safety. Mayor Tom Holden, Mayor Pro Tem Pinkert, I too, from the perspective of your fire department, would like to thank you for your commitment to public safety. Every day when we come to work, part of our mission is to prevent harm, and you've given us the tools to do that. Whether it's the tools to protect those people that live, work, and play in this community, or more than that, the tools to keep ourselves safe, so that every day at the end of shift, we go home safe to our families, and more than that, at the end of career, we also do the same. Those of us who aspire to be firefighters, one of the things, when we're in the process, is one of the things that we look for is the uniform. And I wear this uniform maybe.
Dr. Pinkert, thank them for their service. It is a sacrifice to be in public service in our city and anywhere, and we have had the benefit of their service for these years, and I think it's just very appropriate that the community come out and acknowledge that service, wish them well in future endeavors, and thank them for being part of our local grassroots democracy.
I would just like to add from the words of Cal's member Ramirez, they're very eloquent, public service is a sometimes demanding position. We all do this because we love this community, we want to see this community prosper and do well into the future, and I thought after being here with thirty years with the city that I knew quite a bit about it, my eyes were quite widely open when I was elected four years ago, and I want to thank the mentorship of Dr. Holden, Mayor Pro Tem Pinkert, Councilmember Dean Ballhart, and at the time Councilmember Andres Ferrera. We're starting being, since then, I've had the pleasure of working with a very fine council with Councilmember Ramirez, and Councilmember Flynn, and I think we have a very bright future ahead of us, but we had that start because of the efforts of these two that have helped with retirement and public service.
I too would like to briefly thank Mayor Pro Tem Pinkert, Irene Pinkert, Dr. Irene Pinkert, and Dr. Thomas Holden, and it has been a pleasure to serve with them. One of the things that some people are pretty amazed is that when council members are having a discussion about policy and the future of the city, sometimes it gets a little heated on the dais, and people are surprised when council members then turn around and bestow praise on people who serve. But, you know, I worked with Dr. Pinkert on the graffiti action task force, we also were part of the policies and procedures, new policies and procedures for the city, and one of the things I've always said about her is that she is truly a lady, you know, just very polite with people, and very well-mannered, and she was really a joy to work with. So thank you very much, Dr. Pinkert, thank you for your service, and I have a lot of respect for you, and I think she's going to take, she mentioned recently that, no, no, she said, she was taking a two-year break that the voters gave her, well, I've said the same thing, and Dr. Pinkert, I think you're going to be back someday in another capacity, so Irene Pinkert will be back. Dr. Tom Holden is an incredible person. I've known him for about thirty-five years of my life, believe it or not, and I joke a little bit about this, he was a little bit ahead of me at Santa Clara High School, and when somebody mentioned from dark hair to gray hair, Dr. Holden, I would say that I might even have more gray hair than you, so.
Give it a couple of years.
Give it a couple of years. But I want to say that, Dr. Holden, as mayor, first of all, I think when he ran council meetings, he really moved the agenda along, even though sometimes we'd get off very late, and he had a command of what he was doing, felt very comfortable doing what he was doing, and certainly had a lot of experience before he came there. And I served with Dr. Holden, first and foremost, he and I established together the graffiti task force. We felt very compassionately about what graffiti was doing to the town, we established the task force, and today we have a program that I believe works and is admired countywide. So Dr. Holden is just as much responsible for that as I am, we served together, and I want to thank you for that and working with him together. And there are many other things that I've learned from Dr. Holden, I think, whether he knows this or not, I think he's a master of politics, he understands a lot about how to get things done, and I've watched him, I've learned a lot from him, I could also say that, Tom, you've been a mentor to me also. And one of the things I want to say is, his greatest talent is he's an outstanding father. I don't think I've, next to my own dad, and I know many dads out there are great parents, I watched him in action, and, Tom, I think your greatest talent is being a father. Thank you very much.
First giving honor to God, who was first and the head of my life, I would like to first thank my family, and if my family would stand, my love. I want to publicly thank my family, who I love dearly and give me unconditional love and support. Without you, I could not have done a number of the things that I've done on the school board or for the city, and I just want to thank you publicly. Thank you. I'd like to also thank my campaign committee, who was very positive and always there supporting, and we're just like family members, and I want to thank them as well. My church, not only Bethel, but also St. Paul, Reverend Cox, and Bishop Huggins, who are great individuals in the community, and who are always there, and I know that Bishop Huggins did not have his Bible study tonight so that they could be here, so that gives me a great feeling to know that they skipped that to be here with me. The unions, the fire police, the Oxnard Chamber, the Oxnard Auto Class up there, want to thank them for being here, and my sporty in the pink and black. And I want to make sure that everyone who's supported me know how much I appreciate their support and their good wishes. It's not always easy to lose, but when you do something like running through office, you always have, go in with your eyes wide open, knowing that that can happen. And so I accept that, knowing that the Lord has other things for me to do, other places, and I will continue to do that. I am a believer in working in the community, being a community servant is not new to me, my family, be it here in Oxnard or in Riverside where my father was a pastor. That has been my life and I will continue to serve. So you will see me around, maybe not in this capacity, but many others. And I know a friend of mine, when I lost, called and had a talk with me, and some of the things that people say give you a lot of retrospect. And one of the things my friend and brother said is, sometimes when you lose, you win, because there are other things that you need to be paying attention to or dealing with. So I don't count it as a loss, but I count it as a win and moving on to another part of the journey that the Lord has planned for me, be it with young people or adults. But I will continue to stay active in the community, with the PAL club, and with other organizations, as well as my sorority, when we do service for the community. I will continue working in my church where we work with youth, and I will continue to do the college tours which we will do, which is our twenty-sixth year. I would like to thank my husband, who is always patient, who's sitting over there, because he is patient and does allow others to sometimes do what is not necessary. So I thank him for his continued support and love for me, and always being there and listening to me no matter what the situation is. So to all of you, thank you for giving me. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve.
Mr. Juan, congratulations to Dr. Pinkard, and once again, our thanks. Good evening, once again. I do have a few words, ask your indulgence, after 18 years, there's a few thanks I want to give. And I'm actually, for those who know that I've tried to stay on script, it's more difficult than I'm supposed to keep me moving forward, so you can get to work with that. First, I want to thank the residents of Oxnard. It's truly been an honor and a privilege to serve as your mayor for eight years. You know, thinking back some 20 years ago, when Lisa and I first returned after professional school, we were gonna set up our practice and ultimately raise a family. And, you know, I was blessed as a kid to grow up in Oxnard. I have nothing but great memories of the families and the businesses and committed individuals in the community. And I actually rechose to stay in Oxnard when a lot of my friends were moving out. We knew that once we set up a house and a practice, that we'd be here. But as we settled down, I noticed that it wasn't quite the same community it was when I left, and as a young adult. There were some significant challenges facing the city, and they were having significant effects on the quality of life in City Oxnard. And just as importantly, I remember thinking to myself that somehow the pride of the community had diminished. It was just, it was palpable that that wasn't there. So, I decided to run for council 1993. For those of you that saw the paper, I was a young, dark-haired kid back then, and ran and was successful. But I ran because I wanted to make a difference. I had no other motive, I wanted to make a difference in the community that I knew my kids, your kids, their kids are gonna grow up in, call home. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished together. And when I say that, I mean what we've accomplished together. And I mean that through this council, committed leadership in this council, and previous councils that I got to work with, and most importantly, the partnership we had with the community. I don't care if we're talking about public safety, or neighborhood policing, or clean up uplifting neighborhoods, it was all a partnership, and that's where we got our power. We got our power by four partnerships, looking at your priorities and taking those on. So, I'm very proud to say that I'm leaving office after 18 years of service and eight years as mayor, and I'm proud that, I feel that I'm leaving the city a better place than when I got involved. But tonight's about thanks, and I have a number of thanks that I want to make, and I want to ask your indulgence. First, the residents and businesses of Oxnard, as I stated, thank you for trusting me and the privilege to serve you. It's something I never, ever took for granted. And as my dad would say, you know, I made sure that I didn't go to lunch, go to school just to carry a lunch. I felt we had to do some work when we came to work. I want to thank the current council and previous councils that I mentioned that I've worked with, the city manager's office, Ms. Burnham, our city attorney, all the departments, all the departments throughout the city, but the people day in and day out that I get to see, that I don't get to see, that are working hard to make sure this is a great community for you all, and those are the unsung heroes. Our public safety departments chiefs, I'm very proud to have that presentation this evening. There's nothing more important than creating safe neighborhoods and community, nothing more important. And I knew that when I got on, and I still feel that's the most important thing. Our officers and firefighters that served them, once again, the heroes of our community. Mr. Steve Candy, who led our economic development drive at a time when we were losing businesses by the thousands in Oxnard, and we grew those. I want to thank our neighboring council members and mayors, who are supervisors. I felt it was very important when I got on that we formed partnerships. This is not a City of Oxnard versus Ventura versus Camero versus East County, West County. I worked very hard to form partnerships and liaisons and relationships with. But before my last thanks, I want to congratulate Mayor Lex Flynn, Mayor Flynn in about 20 minutes, Councilmember McDonald, Councilmember Padilla, and what a great, you know, you can hit the road running. And when I called, when I called the Councilmember Padilla, I said, you know, when I got elected, they said I was too young and I didn't have enough experience, so you're in the perfect place, so. I want to thank my optometrist practice staff for the 18 years of their support for me to do what I do. I'm sure you can imagine that things kind of, as Doc would know, they melt over, people coming to get their eye health, eye care taken care of, and sometimes the politics sneaks into it, so thank them for their patience and all their work. Now, special thanks to my family. I'm gonna get through this, I tell you, I'm not sitting down to undo it, so please bear with me. My mother, father, Catherine and Pat, you know, Pat was here eight years ago, right in this room, and, you know, he was extremely happy that I got elected, but if you were here today, I would tell you, he would be more happy than I'm retiring, so. My mother, father, ma, Sonia, Jerry Knapp, these parents, we're truly blessed to have in our lives. The matriarch of my family that's left, Dorothy Kaplan, my mom's sister and her family, my brothers and sisters who gave me advice whether I wanted to hear it or not, and the family that I could not have done without. You know, it's interesting, I didn't have kids when I started this 18 years ago, and I remember standing on Gonzales Road, hanging a campaign sign, when Lisa called and said, yes, we're expecting. So, you know, now 18 years later, I wanted to use my three boys, I'm extremely proud of. You know, Jack, on the end, middle, Patrick, and Nicholas, and I tell you, I could not have, you know, it's one thing for kids to be tolerant, but it's one thing for kids of their age, when they're younger, to be supportive, and they have truly been a support in my life, and I'm very thankful. Thanks, guys. By the way, we don't know this, but you actually did help shape the direction of this community, because when I got on, it was, it was one thing prior to having kids, but once I had kids, there was a whole new urgency and priority, and a sense of urgency for me when it came to issues. And I always looked at how it would affect my kids, and other kids, and other families, and that dictated a lot of my decisions, so thanks. You don't know it, but you were working hard. And quickly, because I don't want to lose it, my wife, Dr. Lisa Knapp. You know, that was typical of Lisa, she was always, we were always, always occupied at visiting, you know, she was never one to step in the limelight and try to be quote-unquote the first lady, but I gotta tell you, you've never been so better by an individual who was an advocate for the city, an advocate for our families and kids, and I'm truly, truly blessed. I could not have done what I did without you, and, you know, you're just an amazing lady and an amazing mom, and thank you, love you. So, when I first ran in 93, and I met with someone, and we talked, and the first, they said, the first thing, I was wearing those Sperry loafers, you know, and I had socks on, so they said, the first thing you do is put some socks on if you want to be a councilmember. And, but I hung something in my office that I found that spoke to me, and that was in 1993, and it's actually been in my office ever since. And when I run, and I, and I serve, I look at it repeatedly. Ironically, it actually is, looks like it's antique, you know, it's got brown edges and kind of tattered. It was new when I started, so I'm gonna read that to you, and this really sums up, you know, what I feel community and public services. It's by George Bernard Shaw, and it says, "This is the true joint life, the being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one, the being of a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little cloud of humans and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, it's my privilege to do for it whatever I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die, for the harder I work, the more I live. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is no brief candle to me, it is sort of a splendid torch, which I have got to hold on to for the moment, and I want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it on to future generations. Thank you very much, with the heart of my heart. Good night, God bless." You always forget something, and I apologize, but I have to add this on. There's an individual who's been with me from the beginning, and his wife, and that's Charlie Kispin, my campaign manager, and Charlie has spent more time with me than when it comes to issues and dealing with him, next to my wife. And Charlie, where you at, please? I want to thank you publicly, I love you, but where you at?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Congratulations, Mr. Treasure, Danny, and Danny for your election, and I'm very proud of you. Thank you. Good night.
I would ask that. Danny Navas, City Treasurer, please step up.
I. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I.
I, Daniel Martinez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Good evening. I want to say that when I was first elected in 2004, I wasn't wearing glasses either, in addition to the gray hair, so it's, it got me, took a little bit of time to get used to wearing glasses in front of the public, so if you want to laugh, laugh in the beginning.
Nope.
Distinguished members of the City Council, members of the city staff, honored guests, and the great people of Oxnard. This evening, I return to the room where I first took the oath of office eight years ago, to serve, protect, and uphold the Constitution of the United States. I am honored and humbled by the confidence and support that the people of Oxnard have so generously displayed by electing me mayor of the City of Oxnard. This evening, however, should not be remembered as a victory for me or the individuals seated on this podium, but rather as a triumph for the hopes and aspirations of individual citizens who often feel their vote does not count. Who would have thought that a 24-year-old recent graduate, investing a small sum of her personal savings. Would pull off one of the most extraordinary victories in the history of the City of Oxnard. Ronald Reagan once said, "Well, I won't hold my opponent's inexperience and age against him," and I know what Dorina's saying today, "She will not hold our age and experience against us." Oxnard has entered a new era, and there's no better time to reengage the residents of the city, to begin a new partnership where the views and concerns of people and neighborhoods are the top priority. Democracy is about dialogue, and the neighborhood councils are the best avenue for that dialogue. It is high time that we give them more authority to do what's best for their neighborhoods. The City Council should act to restore the advisory role of the neighborhood councils and make them equal partners in city governance. They'd also be given a budget to recommend improvements for their neighborhoods. Only then will residents in larger numbers view the neighborhood council system as a legitimate way to raise the quality of life in every Oxnard neighborhood. Today, many residents are hopeful that the worst days of the grave recession are over. As I walked door to door during the recent election, I encountered many younger residents in their 20s and 30s, living with their parents, because they had no job or were underemployed. Tonight, I extend an invitation to my distinguished colleagues on the City Council to establish the Gold Team Oxnard, to put people back to work. Gold Team Oxnard would be a consortium of successful and innovative leaders in business, finance, real estate, education, and the public at large. The team's first task would be sponsor a one-day New Economy Jobs Summit that could be hosted by the Martin B. Smith School of Business at Cal State Channel Islands. Here, a strategic plan to attract new economy jobs could be constructed. Imagine a new enterprise zone, fueling an Amgen-like campus in the city. Companies could receive up to $37,000 in tax credits for every new employee hired. Other ideas could be a new regional airport at Point Mugu that could lead engineers, scientists, and inventors to the Gold Team's new high-tech biotech and medical research quarter. I propose a new round of discussions with the Navy to form a joint military-civilian airport at Point Mugu. Joint-use airports already exist at March Air Force Base in Riverside. Joint-use airports already exist at March Air Force Base in Riverside and Air Force Plan 42 in Palmdale, along with 21 other locations throughout the United States. I also propose an extension of Ventura County Railroad from the Port of Weinimi to New Hall to quickly transport products, many of those products made by these new economy jobs, right here in Oxnard, to distribute throughout the United States. I propose that the Harbor District and the city lead the way to establish a new partnership to get this railroad line extended. And finally, I propose that Oxnard form an alliance with local universities and school districts to focus on academic and training programs that would act as incubators to produce candidates for these new economy jobs. Imagine both elementary and secondary magnet schools in Oxnard that could produce more graduates for these jobs than any other place in the United States. These ideas and others devised by the Gold Team could yield the highest-paying jobs in the history of Oxnard. The time to act is now. Finally, Gold Team Oxnard should also inspire new innovative thinking at Oxnard City Hall. The three Ds, dilly, dalli, and delay, should be replaced with the three Es, efficiency, effectiveness, and ethics. The city of Oxnard has the best workers in the state of California, and arguably in the United States, but their creativity and innovation is underutilized. The City Council needs to explore ways to empower city workers and reward them for their ideas, including incentives for achieving cost savings while maintaining higher performance standards. The salaries and benefits of all workers, including upper management, also need to be discussed by the City Council. Finally, never again should the ethics of the City Council or the city employees be the subject of controversy. The City Council must move immediately on establishing a code of ethics that not only meets but exceeds every public and private entity in the United States of America. Most importantly, the time has come to expand oversight of the public contracts process, which should include participants outside of city government as well as those inside the city government. The city might also be best served by an independently-elected auditor controller that would scrutinize every single step toward the outcome. Only then, I would contend, can the most highly esteemed people of this great city, and I mean it, great city, I love Oxnard, can be assured that their government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. And before I conclude my remarks, I just want to say that this is definitely one of the most exciting days of my life, and I would have never thought I was a paper boy for the Ventura County Star. I used to deliver here to the library, I delivered to the police station right here, I delivered up and down the elevators in City Hall, and I always used to look at those pictures of the mayors as I walked by. This is not, Mayor Lopez wasn't on there yet, so it's no criticism, and I said, "Look at all those old fogies."
Now you're there.
That's embarrassing. But before I conclude, I have my wife and my three daughters in the audience, I want I want to thank them because, as Mayor Holden remarked earlier, no one in a position like this can do anything near what needs to be done without their family's support. If you don't have your family's support, this does not happen. And my wife Julie, very interesting about her, she comes from a family where politics were often discussed at the dinner table and could get very, very contentious, and so she always thought that politics was a negative thing because people would get so heated and it would be so contentious at the dinner table. But as it turned out, I mean, she is the most political, one of the most political people I've ever met, and it's not just her beauty, ladies and gentlemen, she has a lot up here, so I want to thank her. I also have my parents in the audience and my mom and dad. I learned from them, and I am who I am today largely because of my mom and dad. And my mom once made a joke, and she said, when people would ask her, "Mrs. Flynn, why's your son Tim so different from the other kids? The other kids are so quiet and well-behaved." My mom said, "The first one is like a waffle on the waffle iron. Throw it out there." So thank you, mom and dad, I love you very much, and my mom and dad worked very hard on my campaign. My dad was an absolute animal out there putting up signs. It was just like the good old days, and Dad, believe it or not, I have a lot of work for I also have my mother-in-law here, Julie's mom, her name is Jane Kaufman, she's sitting over in the throne area. I have my brother-in-law, John Kaufman, here, who's a new father, he has two little kids And my brother-in-law Dana, who is, he always says, "Don't tell anybody what I do around the coastal areas," he's a petroleum engineer, and a good one, and he makes sure that the environment stays safe, so a round of applause for him. And I know his wife Mary was here, and I've had other members, there's Mary right there, and let's give her and her daughter Chloe. And I have many supporters in the audience, and I can, there's many of them, and they worked very hard on the campaign, and I want to thank them, they know from the bottom of my heart that I really thank them for what they've done. I really appreciate this honor, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't want to let you down, and I'm really excited about working with this group back behind me here, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a great time. So thank you very much, and God bless America, God bless Oxnard. And what do I do now? No, I'm just kidding. So now there'll be remarks by the council members, and we'll go ahead and start with Councilman McDonald, who was re-elected, and he's sitting right here next to me, and I'd like Councilman McDonald to come up and share some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to follow the same advice of my very dear friend, my dear fellow with us, Mr. Now Talk Soon You, and my name is Morris, will be sincere, short, and from the heart. And he would phrase it as be sincere, be short, be seated. And so, I ran four years ago, and Mr. Padilla, I can sympathize with you, I didn't race that, because remember, where I ran, there was a 36-vote spread when they finally declared it at the end, so I know wholeheartedly the emotions that you went through during this waiting period, and, you know, I'm there with you, I feel your pain, trust me. So I'm looking very forward, I was very humbled by the numbers that I received this time around for reelection, lots of more here. Yeah, the screeching up right here is my most ardent supporter, my wife, Lorraine, thank you very much. She's from Ray since 1985, I, God bless her for doing that, thank you so much. What's that? I was getting used to behind, I apologize. I'm just so humbled by the numbers that I received, that the community came on and supported me, and there's lots of support here, I'm not going to name all the supporters, but you all know who you are, you know you're very important to me, thank you very much. I was originally born and raised in Santa Barbara, moved down here in the early '70s, and fell in love with this area, and I've stayed here ever since, and we absolutely love it. And those of us, including the people on this stage, that do this, do this for the love of our community, we want this to be the absolute best community that we can possibly be, and that's what we always strive for. And I'm looking forward to working with our mayor, Councilmember Ramirez, Councilmember Padilla, in the next four years, and having an absolutely wonderful time, so thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
And next, I would like council member, councilwoman Padilla, to come up and share a few remarks.
First and foremost, I want to thank all of you individuals for going out and supporting me. It is because of you that I can now embark on this new journey. I especially want to give thanks to my family and friends for day in and day out giving me constant support and really acting as my pillar of strength and wisdom. Because campaigning, yes, it was a great experience, but it was a lot of hard work. And there were times in which I asked myself the same question that I've been asked for the last few days, "Drina, why did you decide to run for City Council?" And it was usually after those days that I had spent canvassing, or the night that I had spent preparing for a forum, and when I asked myself that question, I encountered something or experienced something that really motivated me forward. Whether it was a local resident offering me a cup of water as the sweat dripped down my forehead, as I tried to explain to her who I was and why I was running, or if it was a driver who stopped alongside me as I was walking down the street and asked me, "Hey, who are you walking for?" Would praise at the fact that I was actually walking for myself, or whether it was an email or phone call that I got from a local resident lending their support and their knowledge, or I simply would just remember the instance in when my mom spent her entire day off driving a minivan full of me and upward-bound students down the streets of Oxnard so that we could disperse as many flyers as we could. Those instances made me run. I wanted to reciprocate the same level of concern, commitment, enthusiasm, and positive energy that I encountered throughout my campaigning process. It is because of you that I ran, and I plan to have the citizens of Oxnard guide me in these next, these next four years. It is because of you that gave me the strength and the courage to actually do what I did. And I also want to give a special thanks to my mom and my dad, Tony and Padilla. So providing me with the strong moral foundation that I know is going to be vital to my role as an elected official, and I ask that God guide me and give me the wisdom to be able to work together with the other council members to make decisions and create a city that is conducive to producing citizens that will continue on with my legacy and really will take the, you know, will take the plunge and really try to make this a city better than what it already is. Because I love Oxnard with all my heart, and I do believe that it's a great city, but I always think that there's room for growth. Thank you very much, thank you for your support. I'm here to serve you.
And I'd like to invite Councilmember Ramirez to come up and offer a few remarks.
Obviously, this day belongs to the newly-elected mayor and councilpeople, as well as our treasurer and city clerk, so I won't take too much time. Oxnard, brimming with possibilities, and you see them exemplified right up here on the stage. We can and will do better for our residents, and we have all the raw material here in this room and elsewhere. I want to just say once again to the people who voted for me and my campaign, I really thank you. It's great to come close, but no cigar. So I look forward to working with our new mayor, Tim Flynn. I want to acknowledge Dr. Tebow, who's sitting up there, who made the campaign, interesting and incredible, and of course, Dr. Tebow, and I think it was a good campaign, people had choices, they participated, and here we are. We have a lot of work to do, we need to engage all of our residents, particularly youth, which was mentioned before, with tremendous challenges of this economy, this environment, this situation we find ourselves in. I believe the problems of our world can be solved at the city level. We're not waiting for big government or big institutions to solve our problems. We can and will solve our problems here on the local level. So I encourage you, help us, get involved, don't be a bystander in your life and the lives of your families. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much to the council members, and as we move through the agenda, item C10, the subject is the opportunity for comments on the installation of city officials by members of the public. Comments shall be limited, three minutes per person, and I'll ask Mr. Martinez, the city clerk, if we have, we have cards for that, or how would that work? Mayor Flynn, do you want the city treasurer to make any comments?
I'd like to thank all my supporters that saw fit to give me another four years to do a good job for the city. Thank you.
City clerk, Daniel Martinez, come up and make a few comments.
Well, I want to thank my supporters, my families, my loved ones, my friends. I really want to thank my city staff because they do a lot of work when I'm not there. Of course, I want to thank the voters for giving me another opportunity to serve the community. Of all my campaigns, this one's a little bit different because I did see a lot of young people doing campaigning on the computer, doing all kinds of things, which was great, seeing the young people involved. I want to encourage people, not only the young people, but people in our community, to apply for our citizen advisory groups that we have, to get involved in the community, and of course, you can go online or go to my office to apply for those different committees to serve your community. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Clerk, and I overlooked that, it was unintentional. The next item, which is C9, and I kind of skipped that, which is very, very important on any city council, and item C9, the subject is the selection by the mayor for the mayor pro temp. And I just like to, from an educational sense, it's amazing what people think about the role of a mayor and the role of a mayor pro temp. But the mayor pro temp, in essence, appears when the mayor cannot be present at a council meeting, or if the mayor were to leave the room, then the mayor pro temp takes over the proceedings and running of the meetings. If the mayor cannot show up to a special event, then the mayor pro temp appears on behalf of the mayor, and, and God forbid if anything were to happen to the mayor, and I'll say that in the third person, then the mayor pro temp would certainly fill in. It's a very difficult decision on who to choose as mayor pro temp. Traditionally, in the city of Oxnard, the position of mayor pro temp went to the senior member of the city council who has not yet been mayor pro temp. And for me, it's a real challenge. I know when that opportunity came for me, I wasn't selected, but I was okay with it. And I gave it a lot of thought, and I wanted to say that, you know, my election, I don't take it for granted, it wasn't a landslide, it was, basically, I received the support of about one-third of the people who voted in the election. Two-thirds of the people, and I want to thank Dr. Tebow for that also, who's up there, two-thirds of the people did not support my candidacy for mayor. And the person who came in second place was Councilmember Ramirez, and I want to congratulate And Councilmember Ramirez offered a lot of dynamic, energetic ideas. One of the things I was most impressed about, what she said in her campaign material, is that imagine this great city, and I think very highly of her, I think very highly of my esteemed colleague, Councilman McDonald. I will select this evening Councilmember Ramirez as the mayor pro temp. as the mayor pro temp. And so I want to congratulate her, and I know she'll do a very good job, no matter what the situation is. And every once in a while, the mayor and the mayor pro temp are not present, and those duties then would go to my colleague, Councilman McDonald, who I'm very much looking forward to working with. And he's also one of my neighbors. It's amazing that you live so, so close to where I live. Item 10, we'll move on. And Ms. Martinez, does the appointment of mayor pro temp, or maybe I should ask the city attorney, does that require the approval of the city council? It doesn't say that here.
Mayor Flynn, while in the past we haven't had that approval, I think it's appropriate, and I think it should be done.
Okay, I would like to nominate Carmen Ramirez as the mayor pro temp. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Okay, item C10 on the agenda. And we want to, we want to move forward as quickly as we possibly can. I appreciate the patience of people, especially their standing in the audience, and it is a school night. So we want to try to get out here as quickly as we can. Item C10 is an opportunity for comments on the installation of city officials by members of the public. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. And once again, I'd like to ask the city clerk, Mr. Martinez, do we have a list of individuals who have signed up to speak for that item? Okay. And would you, would you like to read the names, Mr. Martinez? Or would you like to hand me those names?
Before I do that, Paul Lemos come report to me.